Yes.
Back recording, remember?
I know, I'm trying. We're good.
We'll call this meeting of the order, meeting of the whole, December eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Guttarrosa.
Here.
Commissioner Liverman.
Here.
Commissioner Middleton.
Here.
Commissioner Rondo.
Here.
Mr. Seabrook.
And for the flag. Will you lead us, Mike?
I actually lead him.
To the flag. For the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And just a brief public comment. Brief, brief public comment. Last and final call for brief public comment. The agenda. Anyone want to approve or change the agenda?
I don't see anything that needs to change, so make a motion to set the agenda as it's written.
I'll second that.
Any other comments? Questions? Roll call, please.
We can have some.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right. Sorry. I gotta write that. Nivens?
I did just send them. I got behind, so all this, but no.
There's no consensus on that, right?
That's for next week.
Okay, yeah, go ahead and let that. Number ten, payment to who fed the amount of four thousand three hundred, four thousand three hundred and twenty-nine dollars for the rent plan. Do we have consensus on that?
We agree to.
Absolutely.
That was on the consent agenda? Certification from twenty twenty-four cost allocation plan. And that's number eleven on your, if you scroll down.
Only thing I found is on page ninety-eight on the PDF, it still lists a portion of the courthouse is leased to the Michigan Department of Human Services.
Oh, oh, really?
I'm sure it's just, I'm sure they just go in each year and they don't retype all of these portions, and somebody just missed that, so. See, I really did read that.
Those things removed, otherwise.
That was the only thing, that was the only thing I, that I came across that. Everything else, that's what we pay these folks to do is.
I just put the numbers.
After you were Pam telling me, no, no, redo that, no, no, redo that. Then Joel told me, like, you guys told him that, no, I'll try again.
So the subtraction of that, do we have consensus?
Yeah, I could find, so.
I can have him remove it and then put it back on together for next time.
Next time?
Yeah.
Sure, with the correction.
Yeah.
Well, thanks, Mike, for that. Okay, the next two items. Um, we'll have the sheriff address.
Stop your, you know.
So, okay, we'll have Tina dress up.
Okay.
The lady with the.
Right, Paul.
So the striker life pack annual maintenance, we already have an annual, I think it's a five-year annual, the extra seven thousand dollars is going to be for the next year. This is for equipment that has come off of our, that has been new equipment that needs to be added, but we have three life packs that as of this year, they're no longer supposed to cover. Um, so what they're doing is they're extending it for one more year for three of our light packs, that's where that, that cost is coming in. And then I'll explain the next one in a second. So it is, it's, it's an agree, it's, it's just a, added on to the contract, we already have to cover our equipment.
Beyond what they were.
Beyond what, yeah, this is new stuff, we had a couple with our new rigs coming in, they're covered for a year.
Three months.
Yes, yes.
And that money's come with mammalists?
Yes, yep.
Do we have consensus?
Consensus.
Yeah, on the consent agenda? Okay, we'll let you get number thirteen, too, I guess.
So the light packs, these are the new, these are what's not the eighties, but the light pack that we have in the ambulance, we have three of them, we have four in our service now, one is brand new, we had, I think, last year and a half. The other three, what's happening is they're going to be no longer non-current version, so Stryker took over light pack in the last year and a half, I believe it is. There, what's, the reason the non-current is, boards and all, any replacement parts are no longer available, we don't have a choice in this, if something breaks, we're just not going to be able to get the parts. So during budgets, we went through and we're requesting one get replaced this year, and then to twenty twenty-five, we'll have to do two. Um, and that's kind of where that contract goes back into play, it's covering those old ones, they will cover us for one more year. Once we get a new one, we will actually get, um, they'll, they'll amend that, that seven thousand dollars because we'll have a new one and they'll take one of them off, I don't have a number on it.
And I see they're going to give us, I think they're going to give us a trade-in on the old one, too.
Yeah, so actually, we ended up, um, it, we got with the trade-in, it, it ran totals thirty-three thousand three hundred and seventy, sixty-one.
And Tina did a really good job, too, these quotes were coming in right around forty-two thousand, and to get it down to where we're very comfortable at thirty-three, she really worked hard on that, appreciate the work she put in on it.
Some of the equipment we don't, we can take off of the old one, so to save a little bit, you know. These are lifesaving.
I remember, I remember when we carried three or four things to do the same thing that there's one unit.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
These light packs are the, they're the bread and potatoes, what we do along with the drugs, we have to have these, these are, and we do CPR and our, this is our lifeline here.
I looked through the quote, I thought, you know, what it is, and like I said, combines at least four other pieces of equipment, but.
And we have, and we have budget, I mean, this was budgeted, good in the budget.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-twenty, yeah, but I would have to, I need to put it on, or, you know, be able to sign and say, go ahead with it, because it does take some time for those to come in.
Do you need that immediately, or?
I will need that as soon as.
Tomorrow, or can you wait a week? If we put down the consent agenda, you'll have to wait a week.
Yeah, I should be able to get the, should be able to make that call next week.
Okay, do we have consensus?
Yes.
Yeah. On the consent agenda? Number four. Number fourteen. Elgin County, Remon, Remon?
Remuneration.
There you go. I'm glad you have said.
Thank you.
Just wanted to, um, Pennsylvania surveying.
As you, as you told us.
They're the current, they have been for quite a while.
Don't check them.
Want that guy's, uh, stay in mind of a patient, just walks around.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, there's, you know, some of those spots he's gonna have to get to.
Yeah.
So being a state grant, they only perform the work that they're able to based on grant allocation.
Yep.
Uh, so there's no figures in there, because he gets his, um, references and experience, and he's done a great job for us.
Oh, he's been doing what he's supposed to be doing?
He's the only one willing to do it.
Well, he's the only one?
He's the only one. I mean, I'm asking you to.
Accept the vision, put down the, uh, consent agenda?
Consent for this.
Okay. You ready to go with that?
Yep.
Yeah. Now we're down to sixteen. No, fifty, Merz defined compensation, compensation, employment match increase, who went from three percent with the county will match to five percent. Right?
Across the board.
Across the board. And Merz is a retirement age?
That's, yeah, for the new hires after twenty twenty.
One, twenty.
Very not four one, this would be the employer portion moving up from three to five.
Okay. Do you understand that?
Yep.
Consensus?
Yes.
On the consent agenda? Sixteen, non-union and elected negotiated benefits for twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-six. That's on page ten to twenty-three on your computer. Go look at it.
We put pretty even numbers across the board to be right line with what we did for the all-union folks.
That's what we're going through right now.
Yeah, yeah, the yellow stuff.
Yep, all the yellow stuff are the changes.
All the additions, yeah.
So we figured out, I'll just save the gap time.
Yes.
We came to some understanding on that one from the beginning of the year, I was just reading through that.
What did Max owe that, thirty-five hours?
Thirty-five hours at any time.
Maybe one week, so.
Right.
Thirty-seven and a half, it'd be, it's one week, and it's a straight.
One to one. Yeah, Wizards did some good negotiating, three days, three union contracts, you guys had them done?
Yeah, but it was great.
Because everybody. Several played nice with each other, you know, here's what we have, here's what we don't have.
Prosecutor was a little high, but.
It's still less than the public defender.
Well, yeah, that one, yeah.
We.
Pretty sure we've been setting them up that way.
Yeah, on behalf of the executive, we're very appreciative of the time that you put into our, uh, the packages. I think that the executive branch of this government is working at it more cohesively than ever with the board, um, this is as close as we've ever been to teamwork that I've ever seen in this county, and, uh, we have a lot to be proud about right now.
Thank you for that. Or are you satisfied with?
I didn't see anything in there that.
I'll just add that, um, row, page twenty-six of the thirty-three H, all full-time employees may donate six to nine.
But that's, that's personal, that's the personnel policy.
Yeah, I was just saying.
We're on, we're on sixteen.
Oh.
Some of them had it add, add, or if you had it directly.
Yeah, it kind of runs together.
Yeah, it does.
That's one more, okay, nevermind.
Maybe a two, because I did the same thing earlier.
There we go.
It all goes together.
I went one too far. Otherwise, I could.
Consensus?
Yep.
On the consent agenda? Personnel policy update, re-holiday, holidays, discretionary days, and donating significantly, that's where you said twenty-three, right, or twenty-four?
On page twenty-seven, six, five.
Twenty-four, I think.
Yeah, that's all. All how you're saying, yeah.
Yep, yep.
So I guess I would, all full-time employees may donate six to nine county employees, we straighten this, I've never heard of such a thing, I guess, just in my personal experience.
Well, I've seen you, you know, other unions that, that, but we've just covered it so that everybody, instead of just like within your union.
I mean, there's some people that are like never sick, and you know that, you know, something may come up, that's only needs it, that's.
Yeah, it's, but it has to be, it's time it has to be used.
Yeah.
They can't use it to fill their bank back up, they have to, you know.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, but that wasn't great.
I think that's a great way for everybody to work together.
We used it, our own office with, like, some PTSD issues and things of, uh. It's a good thing that.
Next thing you know?
Good to me.
Consensus?
Yep. Yep.
Consent agenda again? Discuss Elgin County MMRMA net asset distribution in the amount of forty-three thousand five hundred and forty-two dollars. Joel?
So typically, this was put directly into the retention fund. I said I'd put up the feelers, see how we're looking, we'll see here with expenses, writing a little high, um, we're looking like we're going to be too far off, and we get that right up again, this didn't come to the board before, it was just allocated to the retention fund automatically. This will be an annual thing that we can bring to you for net distribution, you have the choice to uh, for in dire straits, move it into the general fund, or add it to the, or just continue to put it into the retention fund. I can get more breakdown, if you have any questions, I know Jean specifically had some about, uh, the interest rate, the number of occurrences, the possible liability based on, you know, there are multiple lawsuits, how much is the new retention fund? It's pushing about one point five, when you start getting into the details, I would need specific questions, if I don't have the answer to Chris Katona, he can't be here, I asked him to come, and he said, it's kind of pointless, because whatever questions you have, he's gonna have to look up anyway.
Sure, he's not gonna be able to have the answer.
And ask him out here, he's like, so he can work remotely, if you have anything you're worried about, or specifically would like addressed, I can ask him for next week. Uh, the other thing is, we can always just put it into the retention fund, and then if we're in dire straits, like I said, we could pull it out. Um, but this would be, in order to hit the twenty twenty-three GL to count, we have to make that decision by next week. If it came to the past January program, it's better December thirty-first, then it's, we wouldn't count, it wouldn't help us for this fiscal year, so.
Well, I guess the easiest question is, do we have someplace dire that we needed?
And until, that's the problem, because until the, and we, we still go well into regular exacting bill, in accrued wages, we still, so we don't really know ultimately how we're going to land, this one might be a little after the fact. Um, so it's kind of like pull the trigger now, assuming, you know, it just, it's a error, let's say it stays side, or just go with it and say, it is what it is, if we need it, you know, for the time out next year, so it's kind of, it's really up to you.
How big a fund do we have with that right now?
One point, pushing one point five.
Really, might be more beneficial to put it in the general fund. I would think so. And ideas, or is we wait till next meeting? But that, it's got to be done next meeting, right?
Short of holding a special meeting.
Right.
Yeah, we'll make sure you double next.
Yeah.
And I didn't know, I mean, you know, we're trying to hit a, uh, termination fund, is that someplace, at least that's something, you know.
Sure, there's a little.
Interest rates and stuff, is that something we're better off trying to give that a little bump and get some money in there for that, or?
So this wouldn't help with next, you know, I feel this would just go into this year's general funds and, uh, be a part of the fund balance if we do, or kind of coming out revenues ahead of expenses. It's. Yeah.
So we're safe just doing what we've been doing, we have to.
It's kind of hard to say without knowing, you know. How long?
Yep.
Washed out, uh, at the end of the year, because there's still another two months worth, did it become a short on a number of revenues, Pam's optimistic, but I don't, again, that's a consensus. I can get more information.
Nobody. The guys, yeah, I need to think on that.
But if you have specific questions, if you can get them, uh, there's really, um, that's like Wednesday, Thursday, if you're going to get back to them, you get it into the package sort of, right?
Okay.
So bump that to.
Take that next meeting.
We'll put it back on the agenda.
Okay. Okay, number nineteen, discussion, discuss Brownfield redevelopment authority vacancy appointments. We're just discussing, right?
Correct.
And you said there's two on there, two appointments?
Three.
Three with two spots.
Two spots open. We got three people applied?
Yep, and Pam is highly in favor of having someone with legal experience on it.
Yeah.
Okay. And then out of the other two, I know, I know Kathy's got the experience being on it.
Yeah.
But I also kind of like the idea of having the city manager on there, too, that gives us a tie-in. And, and in the next one, I'm also going to recommend it to our township supervisors from Yersey to help, you know.
There's only one.
All together, right, but, but in keeping with the theme that I'm recommending, you know. And that's just my opinion, you know.
We're just discussing.
I wish we could take all three. Honestly. Yeah, I wish, I wish we had a spot for all three of them.
There's got to be really. So make a decision on that.
Yeah. You know, we're on to the land bank, we can see, and there's only one.
Two applicants, one.
Yeah.
Who's the?
Let me, and then. The attorney, she's in, she put her name in for both.
Yeah.
And then Lisa put her.
Also here, I was gonna say, she's sitting there, and Lisa's right there, uh. You say we have one opening on?
Yeah, land bank.
I'm on that, and I'm like blinking, like.
Like about three six kids.
One on, one on land bank and two on Brownfields. Are we through discussing it?
Not much of questions for those that are here.
They've got something they'd like to say on there.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, interested in speaking up.
I mean, so is there anything you'd like to say?
Um, no, I just, I'm interested in getting to know the process a little bit more on, you know, what happens when properties are in the land bank.
And I would say, I put in for both, um, not expecting to be a hold of them, so if that helps the board and it's sufficient, um, I hope it does, I mean, I, either one, uh, I'm open to, I think, I bring, uh, that legal experience, that sounds like there might be a little bit of use for that, um, but I'm happy with either of them.
Thank you.
Can we move on?
Yep, good problem to have, too many qualified folks.
Yeah.
Willing to help.
Cost savings ideas, revenue sources?
North Carolina.
Well, you don't know that.
North Carolina.
Oh, we're telling her, I don't have a paper on her front. Thank you, making sure, because it was next to my back.
Uh, we, um, saved some money on our legal research engines.
Yep.
About fifteen hundred dollars a year, um, not a ton of money, but, uh, ultimately, I believe that we're going to get a better product, and the public is going to be better served, um, and we saved some money, and I didn't think we were going to be able to do it, but I gave one of the companies our bottom, our, our top line, I said, you know, I'm not, we're not going to go any higher than this, and they actually cut their price almost in half to accommodate it, and, oh, that's funny, you know, you guys are, uh, shooting from the hip, I see, but we, uh, were able to secure those contracts, uh, and I'm very proud of that, very excited to, uh, kind of get back to what we used to be with our legal research engines, and it makes my job a lot easier.
Now you're on like the top quality.
Yes, now we have the Cadillac, and, uh, it's not something, yeah, we had a, uh, a rusty Buick, now they have the Cadillac. I just don't, I, I think we should compromise as a county on, on this product, on this topic, and we don't, I'm proud of it, very happy. Thank you for that.
Now you're working pretty hard on that, so, thank you.
Thank you, yeah, thank you guys, thanks, Joel, for supporting us. And I know we got paid today, I don't know how much, though, from the prison, for, uh, uh, taking care of their, um, issues.
I know we've talked about it partly in, um, in our budget committee meeting, that, uh, we talked to the sheriff about a couple ideas, I've been giving them, whose county, right?
Yeah.
Cut them a break during COVID on the rates they were paying us, talk to them next year and say, all right, you know, listen, we're giving you time, we're giving you lots of time to try and get back on your feet, we need to get back on, you know, some of the things we need to do to, I know that's kind of in the background, starting to work, so.
And, and, in the last few, in the last two and a half years, the majority of the people that filled that facility are from whose county.
Yeah.
Which baffles me, but that's the way it is.
Okay, that was it, one of my ideas, everyone was out there, so.
Financial matters, appropriations?
Liquor cure, fifty percent. That's the liquor tax payments received.
That's a. Okay. We have consensus on that? It just goes, uh, north.
We don't, we don't, we, we don't have much choice.
No, I have a choice, oh, we, I see them on the bottom, a bunch of we didn't pay.
Well, that's, yeah, I guess my only question was like, do they just not bill us in a kindly fashion, or what's the?
There'd be a trigger, but.
Okay, good enough.
Yeah, I get this from her to tell me how much to pay in this.
Uh, perfect. Consensus on that, I am, on the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Board bills.
Looked them over, I'm pretty sure, signed off on that one, they're a little bit less than last time, so I was okay.
Well.
I like when they're less.
Nothing. Stuck out in.
No, we were all very reoccurring, just smaller wellness.
We don't have the consensus on that, do we, or we do?
That's, that's one.
Okay, consent?
Yeah.
Approval of financial reports of all funds on your computer, then? On page thirty-nine?
Thirty-four to thirty-nine.
All pretty standard to me, looks like everything's.
We'll address some of the.
Starting to get a grip on all those numbers.
Issues, yeah, we got a budget meeting next Monday.
Yeah.
We have to move some layer around, cover some of the overdues, and then address the twenty-four budget at the same time.
I was wondering, on the animal shelter, there's only forty-nine percent of the money that's allocated, which has been spent. Do you think we're a little too high on that?
We, that royalty, um, assumes a fair amount of vet bills, and then Eric typically only works twenty dollars a paycheck, but we budget twenty hours a week. So, without drilling more into the each line item, but I think that's the bulk of it. Veterinary bills and.
Is it, what are the good possible to do a budget amendment?
We, we're gonna.
Yeah.
We're gonna cover all this stuff.
Like perhaps legal bills? Regarding the.
All those numbers you mentioned, easy. Those negative numbers?
What's the only question I have on that? Anyone else with a question? You consent on that, then?
We, yep.
You'll look into it, right?
We're gonna have a budget, budget.
Oh, that's right.
Okay.
You're the budget guy.
It's gonna be in Jamaica's. It's gonna be in Jamaica's.
And the Joel do the heavy lifting.
Yeah.
To not get herself.
On the consent agenda then?
Yep.
Where, there were no resolutions, right? Committee meeting or reports?
You guys go first, I think.
Working on the budget, uh, the twenty-four budget looked good, we had just a couple of minor tweaks. That uh Joel and Pam were gonna get worked out for us. Really was just a matter of where we were putting the money, it wasn't even a, you know, it wasn't the whole, we're not gonna give that much, we're just, which. Spot it's gonna be located in. Uh, so they're gonna make those, and then, sometimes they're gonna go on Monday, we'll go over that one more time, and we're gonna address. You know, where we have to do funds to cover these overages and things like that, so. Going really smooth again. Joel probably getting sick of hearing that, but between him and Pam and the department heads, they did most of the work ahead of time. We were able to just pretty much go through, double check. Said one minor tweak and. Yeah.
There were many tweaks along that.
Well, no, that's, that's why I'm giving you, that's why I'm giving you guys credit for it, but by the time it got to our plate. You ironed out most of the.
Most of.
Things that needed it. So I appreciate all that hard work.
Um, I have nothing on committees, I only had one meeting last month and it was. Up for DHS, it was pretty simple.
Uh, I, me and Dean attended an LMS meeting and we pushed to have. All these offices open on Friday, the people are there, they should be open, get a little bit of. People pushing back, but I think they should be open.
They have a reason.
Not really. And uh. I was at a fair board meeting and they thanked the county for the Zebby later. And I think that's called all, oh, we uh, this month, the person. On the board of LMS becomes chairman. January first for a year, they switched counties, so possibility I'm, I'll be the chairman on it. See how that goes. Anyway, there, you know, those offices should be open.
I got a feeling they're gonna be open.
Yeah.
Correspondence, Joel?
Uh, so over here, another net asset distribution from workers comp, that one. Already given to the treasurer, that is an annual arrangements depending on. Plans and. Thirty-four thousand eight hundred and seventy. That was butted as part of reimbursements, we do anticipate that. Uh, MSU extension, public listing session. Obviously, not going to today. Medium rail has a. Grant available. I didn't include this fact list thing, it's kinda hard to scan, but if you're interested in me copying. The brochure.
I wonder if somebody like Kathy Reynolds would be interested in that.
The board is.
Thank you. That's it for correspondence? Board comments?
I'd just like to thank everybody, like I said. I was starting to have nightmares, oh yeah, look who got stuck on the budget committee, but really, I mean, it's been. Very smooth, very easy, like I said, we had one little tweak. Literally, Sheriff's gone, great service. Dean's picking up his phone to call him, he walked in to answer our question, before Dean could hit send, so. But no, I, I appreciate the fact that. Everybody's been amicable in dealing with each other instead of antagonistic. Just makes things a lot easier for everybody, makes a better working environment. It's just all mouth-bellied for the county, we all get along, so, thank you.
Uh, I would like to also uh, comment, comment on everybody's, how they acted with the uh. Uh, contracts. That, that, that really went good and people, it was awfully nice to work with people like that. And uh, I think we have good staffs around here. And they're willing to, you know. Inflation going up, some people say seventeen percent and people agreed to four percent. Raised, you know, because we don't have it, that's, that's commendable. That's all I've got to say. No one else? Well, big enough bitch about the weather?
I got a migraine, yeah.
Okay, staff comments?
So. Proposal to uh, implement an early voting. I apologize in advance, I didn't foresee any way that the townships could. There, there are several different ways you could implement that, you know, off-site voting, early voting centers. Um, or you could do countywide or combination of those. I don't, I, I asked the local mercs, and I got the answer expected, there's just no way that they could, they don't have the site, they don't have the staff. So, uh, under the gun, to get that grant in, literally had maybe twelve days from the time that they said. Here, get your plan in, you gotta have it in. If you, if you want your money. In hindsight, they, they, they probably pushed harder on us than needed to be, because they ended up saying. Well, if you're not in by that deadline, it's okay, I still can go on your money, but. You know, getting spooked, I got it in early, and I did not get board approval to use this room as the early voting. Room, and I definitely should have done that, because I should not have, you know, not really decided just to. Take over the boardroom. Um, I don't know where else we would do it, we could do it offsite, like at a school, there's other hoops to do, this just made the most sense. I set it for eight to four, we have, I said legally, probably get to do nine days minimum. Uh, so it would be the, the weekend, two weekends before, and then the weekend, uh, two just before the, the election. This time it would be for February and then also the August and November. You don't have to do them for school onlys, and then going forward in twenty-six, we won't have a presidential, so it'll just be the August and November. There was a, a bit of a problem, so I'm gonna put on the agenda, hopefully. Retroactively assume use of this room for that, and hopefully we do. Uh, the only problem I foresee is that. Because it stretches so far in advance of the election. The President's Day for sure, and then I have to look at the election dates and help you back up. The August and November, there may be a couple of days that I would ask any organizational, just scheduling the board meeting one hour later. That's just to give them enough time to close the suspended tabulators. You know, do their little quick balancing, even four thirty, I think thirty minutes would be good.
Do you know which, would it be the committee in the hall or the regular meeting?
It would be the regular meeting.
Cool, come on, ask me.
It'd be later.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that would be, like, I'll come up with the specific dates that they could have some overlap and conflict.
You gotta remember, Monday nights, the backers are playing.
For President's Day, we, that, that's the Monday, and typically bump that to the Tuesday anyway.
Yeah.
Again, another thing to discuss, because now with us being open on President's Day, does that? Change the practice, I don't know, but um, I'm just putting that out there, that there might be a couple of dates, if you're in agreement. Hopefully, we already use this room for the early voting, that there might be a couple of board meetings that would have to get pushed a little bit.
Speaking for myself, I call on Joel to worry about scheduling space inside this building, so, I'm not too offended if you didn't ask.
That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Move my office.
Just quickly, um, thank you again for the uh process and the union negotiations. Uh, for the, you know, I'm in this building almost every day, there's a very good energy in the building right now. People are very positive, there's a lot of camaraderie, and uh our guys are working at very high rates, uh, which very, I think is directly. For the to, this negotiation process, three contracts, three days, it's unheard of. Uh, in this county, it's first, my first time seeing this in this county, and I think I'm on my third or fourth contract, so, awesome. It, I dare say, it was actually fun. For a minute, um, they came, you know, I think the unions came in with a very, uh, the, you know, expecting more combative situation. And instead they got transparency, and uh that, we settled the contract very, very, uh, my staff's contract was settled in less than three hours. That's, that's amazing, um, last, thank you also for raising the DC match, that's gonna help us retain new employees. Which is, uh, is a problem everywhere, not just, not just for us. And um. It's a challenge for me sometimes, because with these contracts, you know, these last little, my guys have, each have. Six days of vacation still. So we're running kind of a skeleton crew for the next two weeks, one person in the office while the other person's on vacation. To try and use up all that vacation, unfortunately, the courts have the same issue, so they didn't schedule much. And lastly, I just wanna thank Joel, um, and preemptively thank Joel, because this next year is gonna be hell for him.
Yes.
And uh. You know, and we look at some of, we look at like the integrity of our elections, which people talk about a lot nowadays. Don't worry about that, Eltra County, our elections are a lot solid, and you can see the, you can see the writing, you can see it all, and that's because of Joel and his crew, so. Thank you. That's all.
I have a few things, uh. I'm glad Lisa's here tonight, I'm not sure, for those of you that are about municipal township, they got new nine-one-one signs up. About total township, but what an amazing project, Lisa, thank you, and it's trickling back now and getting. These new requests, all the signs that we have delivered to us are identical to municipal townships. It's really taken off, and what a great job, um, you. Increased the safety in the township, um, you know, if we, we can't see a sign and we drive past it, those seconds could count. And now we have two-sided signs, you can see them from both ways, and the reflective ability on those signs are twice as good as we've had, so. I'd like to thank you, Lisa, specifically on municipal township, but commend your job, work with us, so thank you.
And I wanna say that was Selena Velko. On, on municipal township, Laura Selena has worked for those for the last five years.
That's awesome, I'll, I'll make sure to reach out to Selena, so, and I see Lieutenant Grohovak in, in the back, uh. As you know, um, we had a retirement and emergency management, um, in June, Lieutenant Grohovak's come on and. Um, brand new emergency management, um. Director, he's done an amazing job, just an amazing job, uh, our emergency management with Steve Link. Uh, Sam Berhovik and uh John Iverson is just. I couldn't be more happy, uh, they've done an amazing jobs, Sam especially coming in blind on it like you did, um, great job, great job. Uh, I got that up, got that up, and also, annoying Rox Steinoff like I do. And it sounds like, and I never knew she may have applied for one of your openings there. To, to get her on any committee, you can get this young, brave, intelligent. I, I'm, she's amazing, so, um, I just wanted to say that, so Rox, I hope that. Um, you're coming aboard, and I know you do amazing things for this county, on those committees, and um. Lastly, um, we've been meeting, well, every couple of months, we started meeting elected officials, Rob, Joel, Pam and I. And them meetings have just been awesome, and we discuss, you know, weaknesses, strengths in our departments, how we can help one another. Um, it's, it's gone really, really well, and it's gone into the budget process, and I can say that. The job Joel and Pam did, and the board in our budget process this year was so professionally done and so transparent. Like prosecutor said, it is amazing job, so I commend the board, and I commend uh Joel and Pam on their amazing. Uh, mathematical skills, I guess you might say, and the work they've done, and. Last but not least, I wanna thank our prosecutor, uh, Mick, you were part of something today which we, in-house stuff that we do, uh. Rob has our back in our department, and the police officer's back in this county, like. We, we can never ask for better, um, I think the. The goal is to protect those that can't protect themselves, and we're not only doing that, is we're also arresting the bad people. That are trying to prey upon our most vulnerable. Um, we have things going on in the background right now that Commissioner Rondo was semi. Got a little education on it today, uh, we had officials from Arquette County come down, and Rob came over to my office, we met, and. I can tell you that the goal is and always will be to protect youth in this community, and uh we will continue to strive to do that. And as we go forward, I think as a board, you're gonna be very proud of some of the accomplishments that you're gonna see our local law enforcement and our local prosecutor. Uh, make towards that goal of protecting our youth. And um, I'd like to thank Commissioner Rondo greatly for the school resource officer that he was so far. Pushed us for the last few years at the board, so professionally agreed to, but, um, like prosecutor Steinoff says, I, I've. Worked for the county thirty-two years, and I've never seen the working relationships as good as I've seen it now. And I really enjoy coming to work now more so than in the past, and. I can tell you have diamonds in the rough in these two elected officials right here with Joel and, um, Rob Steinoff. And um, I think the both of them, they've made my life easier, and um, thank you, you're, you're both a rock solid, I appreciate you both. So, Martin, I appreciate what you do.
I'm grateful of you guys, I really am, truly am.
And for the first time since I've been here, I do feel like we're really cohesive right now, we're kicking, we're able to, like, really kicking butt. At what, what our goals are, and uh, like, like Sheriff said, it feels good to come to work. You, I don't care where I walk in the building anymore, I'm not trying to avoid conversations or trying to avoid tough calls. Rolling it together, feels good.
I got a question for you, Stoll, and it's um, the discretionary, discretionary days, are, are the people for that, the workers? So taking a holiday or working.
Those four days.
Through the holiday, or what, what, what's their?
My, after that negotiation, my guys said, I don't, it doesn't matter, I'm gonna be here when you need me. And I'm, and that's why I'm in a situation now where I'm at the end of the year, and we gotta burn dozen vacation days.
Now they got too many.
Cause now they got too many days, cause they like what they do and they're good at it, so, you know.
Curious about that, my guys are, my guys like that.
It should be a really big perk, for, especially for any new people coming in, they're gonna get those, they'll get those four extra days that would take, you know.
Yeah, I think it's a perk for. Those offices open for more days, or the county? Anybody else can? Anything else? Uh, brief public comment? Vote all four of you, just jump up at the same time. One more time, brief public comment. Third time brief public comment is over. You call it. Do we?
Yeah, you call it.